2021 at four thirty P M. Mr. Carrillo, verify before words, please.
Doctor Amado, I am here.
Present, ma'am.
Jessica Potero, we're all here.
Present.
Ruby Blata, Councilman.
Present.
Nori Garza, Councilwoman.
Here.
Alberto Vera, Councilman.
Here.
Mayor with the statue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pettis. I'm going to call for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, thank you. If we can have everyone please stand for invocation and pledge allegiance. Lovely Father, thank you for your blessings over us. As we meet each new day, please let us be filled with your spirit. Wherever we go, let us spread love, peace and faithfulness. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I declare our United States of America, in the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calling for presentation, item number one, Ms. O'Gallagher, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. We're here this afternoon to present to you our employees of the month for August and September. We're going to start with August. Our August employee of the month is Alex Fajardo.
Yes.
Okay. Just give him a minute.
I guess it's never late. Behind the scene guy.
A nomination came in by our media relations director, Ms. Roxanne Lerman, and it states, Alex is an asset not only to the media relations department, but other departments as well. He never hesitates to help and has been instrumental in finding software and solutions for other departments such as the legal and I T departments. Alex never gives up and always figures out a way to make things happen. The skills in the media department are extraordinary, but his willingness to help others and straighten relationships is what truly sets him apart. Thank you, Alex, for building and promoting a better work environment for all. Thank you, Alex, for that. Our September employee of the month is Ms. Mary Ann Mariestal, our programs coordinator from our Mission Historical Museum. She was nominated by Cynthia Stojanovic, our museum director, and it states, Mary Ann exemplifies the definition of self motivation and always reflects a great appreciation for the mission and objectives that the museum is striving to accomplish. She has taken the initiative to go above what is required of her position by learning many new skills that have allowed her to work, that have allowed her work to be seen and accomplished on a new level. Her dedication and passion for her work can be seen most recently in the award-winning project Discover Mission Historical brochure. Most importantly, she is a positive and encouraging force among staff. It has been a pleasure to watch her, to watch her growth and development from the time she started at the museum as an intern volunteer. Thank you, Mary Ann, for all you do for our Mission Historical Museum. Your good intentions.
Any else with the museum? Yeah, all of them. Is board members or anybody associated with the museum? Parent or parent? First word is no, me. By me, you need to. All informants, sir. Enriquez, Ms. Enriquez, you have the podium, you have item number two.
Good evening, good evening, mayor and council. So the chamber wrapped up a wonderful and successful and kickoff annual awards ceremony last, last Thursday, so we're excited for a new year. And we'd like to remind them, our community and our leaders, our business leaders and our chamber members, that nominations are open throughout the year. So we will be promoting those opportunities as we go. So great, great time last Thursday. The chamber is now preparing for the 2021 Annual Health and Wellness Fair. This year it's dated for December ninth and tenth. We are meeting with our hospital partner tomorrow to hash out details and confirm their sponsorship to help us carry out these, this health fair event. This year, we will, last year it was by appointment only. It was in the mornings, the morning session, so we're going to do it again because it was very successful, people were prepared, people knew to come fasting. So we will be doing that again. So it'll be December ninth and tenth, a Thursday and Friday in the morning hours by appointment only for the full blood work. This Wednesday, we do have an info session for the merit grant. So just a reminder, any businesses who is interested in tapping into six hours of one-on-one coaching hours, we still have space available. So we'd like our businesses that are interested in improving their business practices to, to reach out to us. And our tourism team is preparing for the connection fair happening next Thursday, where the activity directors and R V partners will be present to collect information on things to do here in the area. So we will be heavily promoting our museum, our parks, other assets, and things to do here in Mission as well, which includes the Mission Food Park. And later this month, we are preparing for lunch and learn on productivity and time management. We have market days, which we invite all of our members. And then we have S B D C educational components as well later in the month of November. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions to the president of the greater chamber of Mission?
No questions, but I just want to congratulate you for doing such a good job on that. I know they did a good job and the decorations and everything.
The theme was well in place.
Awesome, yes. We wanted it to be a special moment for, for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gallagher. Item number three, departmental reports, council. This is at the time that you have the departmental reports there that was presented in your packet. Do you have any questions? Mr. Pettis will be answering those questions or he can direct his directors to answer the questions for the council.
I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
We have a motion to approve the reports as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second and this is open for discussion and the. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign. Motion carries, item number three is approved five oh. So we're moving to item number four. Rosie Olivares, you have the podium map. Please identify yourself, name and address for the, for the record and.
Rosie Olivares, five oh nine Mayberry, Mission seventy five seventy two. I am a board member of Huayitas del Valle and hello, everyone. Huayitas del Valle R G V Paz is here to announce that after three and a half months of phone calls, emails and visits to the state Capitol, S B five, formerly known as S B four seven four, the Safe Outdoors Dogs Act, was officially signed by the governor this afternoon. We are here to ask that our city, our pet friendly city, does not wait the ninety days for it to take effect. We are tired, we are worn out, and we are asking for your help.
Buenas tardes a todos, mietapia. Huayitas del Valle está contento por el logro, verdad? De poder ayudar más a nuestros animales. Seguir diciéndole a la comunidad que protejamos a nuestros animales de no encadenados, no sin agua, sin comida, en el sol. Solo estamos contentos por eso, gracias.
We are asking that our city doesn't wait, like I said, until January eighteenth for it to take effect. I have called throughout the state and have spoken with several cities, and they actually have ordinances that are even stricter than what the city, what the state is putting out. I spoke with the state legislator earlier today, and he said that we have the power to be able to talk to our city council to be able to get that enforced. And so we are asking that of you guys today to see what we can do to help make our city the best that we can be for our pets. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Olivares, for your advocacy. And we'll see our legal to get with our city manager to work on something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on item number four? Question. Call for item number five, citizen's participation. Mr. Carrillo, please identify, anybody that signed up?
No, mayor, we don't have anyone signed up.
We don't have anybody signed up here in the audience, so that this time I'm going to ask the, we're electronics, do we have any, any citizens participation signed up in electronics? Without having anybody on item number five, I'm going to close item number five and call for the public hearings and the rezoning, the planning and rezoning recommendations with item number six. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and council. Item number six is a rezoning for a twenty-two point zero four acre tract of land, out of lot twenty-eight dash five, West addition to Sherland. This is from A O I Agricultural Open Interim to our one single family residential. The applicant is Roberto Calbio. The council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Pollin and West Mall Two, road along the south side of Mall Two. Surrounding zones include to the north agricultural and C one office building, to the east agricultural, to the west agricultural and single family residential, and to the south single family residential. Existing land uses include office to the north, to the east, west and south. It's all single family residential. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as residential. The proposal complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. P N Z and staff recommended approval. There's a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask the, is there anybody in electronics? We have nobody, so I'm going to be closing this public hearing and ask guidance from the city council. I'm going to approve. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
Correction, correction, I'll pull back, I'll pull back because I have a question.
Yes, I just have a question. I'm noticing that there's the canal that, that runs on two mile line. Are there any plans for that canal to be placed underground or are they going to leave it?
They have not submitted, but I know they still haven't submitted the plat. That will be done shortly after the rezoning. So we will have more information on that, but right now I don't.
Okay, because I'm noticing that the line is not over the, over the canal, or on the other side of the canal, right? It's.
Yes, I know, I know they're working with the irrigation district.
Okay.
For the canal, I know they're working on it and, and of course the, you know, so they've already made contact with them and so forth.
Good.
They are, I think they're going to have to reroute it differently.
Oh, okay.
So they're getting cost estimates and so forth. Or so when they get to the plat, the, the actual site review, you know, then at that time they'll be able to do the presentation, but they have made contact.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign. Motion carries, ordinance number fifty ninety-nine is approved five zero. And I'm calling for public hearing number seven. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number seven is a rezoning for all of lot two, block one fourteen, original townsite of Mission. This is from our one single family residential to our two duplex fourplex. The applicant is Anne Construction and care of Ira Diarra Hernandez. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southeast corner of East Eight and Saint Marie, along the east side of Saint Marie. Surrounding zones include single family residential to the northeast, west and south. Existing land uses include single family residential to the northeast, west and south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low density residential. The proposal does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. P N Z and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. Please identify yourself with name and address for the record, sir. And you have three minutes.
Ira Diarra Hernandez, can I speak in Spanish?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mire, básicamente vengo a, en, mi cliente está en Dallas, entonces lo puedo asistir a la, a la junta. Él lo está en el hospital. Lo que estoy proponiendo en este proyecto es básicamente meter un duplex. Yo veo que en esa área hay varias, varias zonas, hay residenciales y es comercio, es también multifamiliar. Hay fourplexes cerca del área. Normalmente nada más a mi cliente vino, hace mucho tiempo él compró este lote, ya tiene mucho tiempo. Entonces es una zona residencial y hay fourplexes, está todo mezclado. Yo pienso que si le puede dar un poco de plusvalía, meter un duplex por cuestiones de, pues no, no vamos a afectar nada. Básicamente hay atrás de ese, de ese terreno también hay un du, hay un fourplex. Y luego como a cuatro, cinco terrenos hay un, hay un fourplex, entonces no le veo algo malo en cuestiones de resonificar y poder hacerle este proyecto. Pues básicamente son, es un área muy vieja, entonces el área, pues yo creo que hasta le daría plusvalía a todas las propiedades que están alrededor. Eso es lo que yo pienso.
Gracias.
Sí.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to go to electronics. Is there any electronic individuals? No, no, I'll close in this public hearing for item number seven and ask for the guidance of the council.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Suzy, so this is the one next to Saint Paul's Conference Church, right? Okay, didn't we already say that we weren't going to have any more apartments in that area?
That's why we're recommending against it.
Yeah. And were all the neighborhood advised? Because I'm surprised they're not here.
A lot of people have owned this property for quite a while, and they're probably not aware that there's, like you said, he's not from here.
Yeah.
So they're probably not aware that we are no longer, we did, we did let the applicant know before they applied that we were going to recommend against it for the same reason. But they decided to pursue the.
No, I mean the neighborhood there. Were they notified that this was what they were applying for?
Yes, we didn't have any, any opposition.
Really?
But there's a fourplex on the back.
On the, on not exactly on that block, on the block before that, after this particular block. There is a fourplex, and that's the only one, but all of the properties immediately next to it and Apollo Street are all residential.
If we were to allow fourplex there, would need to balance the neighborhood and bring the property values up?
Well, the property values would be up to the tax office. I don't know if it would help, but the direction given, because before we used to have the option of a conditional use permit. We did away with that option because we, we did have a lot of opposition when we got approached for duplex. So that's why we reverted back and did not have that option anymore.
I'm ready to make a motion if you're.
Let me, is there any other council member that has any questions? No, I will entertain your motion.
I move to deny the request for the R two.
Second.
You move to approve the denial.
I move to deny the request.
That's what I'm saying, okay.
Yes, she's approving with second.
Any further discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign.
Aye.
Aye, I'm voting ayes. So the, the denial moves forward and a three to two vote. Item number eight, public hearing, ma'am. You got the floor, Luna.
Item number eight is a rezoning for lots one and two, Sherry Village subdivision, R one eight to C two. That's who said Flores is the applicant. On this one, mayor, we received a request from the applicant to see if there was a way we could table this item or take no action, because he is unavailable and he would like to be present at the meeting. However, we did have people in opposition at the P N Z meeting, and I, and I guess they're here today.
Well, let me, let me, let's continue since we published the public hearing. Let's continue with the public hearing and let's hear the people as we, as, as we go along.
Okay. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of Village Drive and Sherry Road, along the north side of Village Drive. Surrounding zones include to the north, C one office building, to the east agricultural, to the west and south, this large lot, single family. Existing land uses to the north, to the north is a commercial plaza, to the east is a bandwidth park, and to the west and south, and the site, they currently have a single family residence. This property, future land use map shows it as low density residential. The proposal does not comply with the city's future land use map. However, it does with the existing land uses. Staff believes that a C two zone would be intrusive to the long-lasting single family residential. Staff is recommending denial of a C two, however, would be receptive to a C one, which for the following reasons. One, the subject property adjoins Sherry Road, a five lane major street. The existing C one property abuts the site along the north side, and C one would be the most restrictive of the commercial zone. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you. We did have a, we did have opposition, they submitted a petition. It was seven percent in opposition of the request. It's not in some.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this rezoning? Please approach the podium at this time. Identify yourself, you name an address for the record, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Peyton De La Garza, and I live at twenty-two oh one Village Drive, which is one of the properties inside Sherry Village we're here to talk about today. Basically, there's, there's three main reasons why we're here in opposition of changing those two lots on the end of our neighborhood into a commercial property. First and foremost is the safety of our neighborhood. As y'all saw from the map, I don't know if we could bring it back up. Our neighborhood is a one-street neighborhood with a cul-de-sac at the end. There's no outlet. The only way in and out of Village Drive is off of Sherry. And on that entrance, it's very narrow. And in fact, we've already had and almost had several accidents turning into that area. So if we were to change or if y'all were to approve the change of lots one and two that are marked in red there into a commercial property with commercial traffic, it's going to be a nightmare. That's aside from the fact that they will have to use the patrons of that commercial property, whatever it is, will have to use Village Drive to essentially turn around, because there's no entrance onto lots one and two from Village Drive. So what I'm imagining is they're going to have to go all the way down Village Drive, use the cul-de-sac to turn around and come back out in order to exit onto Sherry Road. That, of course, creates a safety problem. We don't have sidewalks in our neighborhood. I guess when our neighborhood was developed, there's no actual easement for sidewalks. So we use the streets for our kids to play in. I have a two-month-old and a two-year-old, and we're all here very concerned. I know that there are some people here also on Zoom. I believe that were going to join us about the safety that is really going to be in question if lots went into our change into a commercial property. The other two issues from the legal standpoint, lots one and two are part of Sherry Village. They're subject to deed restrictions. I have the deed restrictions here, if I may pass them up. Limit the use of any lot inside Sherry Village. When it was developed, as we know, those deed restrictions follow the land. So when the owners of lots one and two purchased the land, those deed restrictions apply, and they specifically limit the use and for residential only, it's not to be used for commercial purposes. And you'll see that in sections B and Q. And I also attached a copy of the map on the back so that you can get a closer up look of our neighborhood. Third, our neighborhood does have an H O A, as y'all would probably imagine, and in no way, shape or form have they attempted to contact the H O A, gotten any type of approval from the H O A, nor have they contacted us about being released from the deed restrictions. So for those three main reasons, we ask that the court uphold the denial as it was given at the P N Z hearing. Did y'all have any questions from?
Any questions? Well, it's a public hearing, we can, we can ask questions. Anybody else in favor against this rezoning? In favor against, if you, please come to the podium, sir, and, and.
I'm Scott Rowland, twenty-two fourteen Village Drive.
Let me explain, I, I made a error, and in three minutes, the rules have been changed, and we changed to two minutes, so sir, you.
I take me one minute.
Okay, you have the floor.
All right, twenty-two fourteen Village Drive. I'm an owner myself of, every, every neighbor is opposed to everything on the rezoning. We have an H O A in progress, done, completed, and this wasn't meant. I'm in the real estate business, been in there for forty years, and this would kill us. In the way the entry is, and Peyton put it together, is the entry is on Village Drive and with a cul-de-sac back there with kids and everything else, and we got a thirty-foot street, and you park one car and you can't get around.
Yeah.
And so anyway, my point is, but every single neighbor is opposed to this. And that's probably all I need to say, so.
Thank you, sir, for your information. Any other in favor against this rezoning? Please state your name and your address for the record, and you have two minutes, sir.
Michael Davis, twenty-two oh nine Village Drive. Three kids. You know, they explained it pretty good, as well as I can see. The only thing it says, you guys, if you live or been around Sherry Land and Sherry Road, around Banworth Park, around the high school, there's a lot of traffic. Making a left turn into ours is hard. I mean, you wait, you know, if you try to cross the street from Banworth Park, basically right across the street, you can't get it because of the traffic. If there's cars in there and we need to make a left turn and there's someone pulling out, how do you get in? It is a real problem if there's a lot of traffic, especially parked out in front, like they're proposing on doing, I guess it's supposed, I don't know for sure, but they're saying it's going to be a, a daycare. Can you imagine stopping to pick up your kids at daycare and we had not been able to turn in? You know, I'm an agriculture, I have a duly, I mean, for me to try to get in the street, I just, I, I foresee problems and accidents happening if it passes.
Thank you, sir, for your information. Anybody in favor against this rezoning? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. Name and address, sir, for the record, and you have two minutes.
I'm in twenty-two ten Village Drive. I am opposed to the rezoning of this property for commercial purposes. And the reason being, just as they, my neighbors laid out, traffic, there will be a complete nightmare. In the mornings, just trying to exit that street, turning north is, you're, you're going to be waiting there five, ten minutes. The street to go in there, like Peyton mentioned, is extremely narrow. Just the addition of one car at the end of that street will make it extremely difficult for us to go in, to go in and out. Again, it's a dead end, cold, dead end street, cul-de-sac. The only way for people to go in and out of that street is all the way down and all the way back. So I think. So I think it's going to create a nightmare especially traffic. I have two kids, I have a dog, two of my neighbors, so that's why we are opposed to the rezoning.
Thank you, sir. Anybody in favor against this rezoning, if you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. Go ahead, ma'am. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody in favor against this rezoning, if you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask if there's anybody in electronic, there are some people in electronic.
Yes, ma'am, this is your court.
Sir, you have the floor, please identify your name and address and you have two minutes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jorge Velasco and, and I represent the owner. Basically, what the owner would like to do is to table this item because he was going to be back for this meeting. Unfortunately, there was a COVID case on, on, on the cruise that there, he was going and he couldn't return on time, so he's asking respectfully, asking for a table of this item. He would like to address the, the situation. I mean, there are several items that are of value, the safety of the neighborhood as well as the HOA and basically the traffic problems. He thinks that he has a solution for some of this, for the intended use that he does have, where basically C one could be something that is, that it would be good for, for the business that, that he's going to be leasing to in case that this is approved.
Thank you, sir. Anybody in favor against this rezoning, there's an electronic, is there anybody else that? Nobody else?
Mayor, I have a question for Susie.
The public hearing, please. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for the guidance of the council. Ma'am, Mr. Ortega, you have the floor, ma'am.
Susie, this is the neighborhood right across Banworth Park where they have those beautiful mature trees.
Yes.
I wasn't getting exactly where it was, but now I know exactly where it's at, so it's the house in the front. I'm ready, ma'am, I'd like to.
Any other question by the council? You have the proper motion, ma'am.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion of going ahead and going with a planning and zoning for denial of this request.
I would second that motion. And I'd just like to add my little comment on that, that I don't see this, these two lots being any sort of commercial, whether C one or or of that, just it needs to stay residential.
And, and my comment would be that they have, they have to take it back at least to the level of the HOA and discuss it, the neighbors, they need to decide what's, what's best for them in their neighborhood. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries and is denial at five oh for item number eight and I open for the public hearing for item number nine, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number nine is a conditional use permit to place a twenty by eight storage container spot for temporary office use. This is a charity company LLC. The address is six oh eight Trinity Road. It's lot two B Anvar subdivision, it's currently industrial. The applicant is charity company LLC in care of Ana Guerra. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the southwest corner of Mayberry and Trinity Road along the south side of Trinity. The applicant is proposing to have a temporary material storage site and would like to place a twenty by eight storage container to be utilized as a office. The intent is to utilize the mobile office for two or three years and then after make arrangements to make a permanent structure. They are proposing to have sand and gravel at the site to load the Bulmer Mary concrete mixer. The machine mixes the material to produce the exact amount of concrete needed for each project. Access to the site will be off of Trinity, the hours of operation are Monday to Saturday from seven to six. They're proposing to have five employees, a minimum of far parking spaces will be required for the building. The applicant will need to comply with the landscaping requirement. P and Z and staff recommended approval for a period of one year to assess the new operation, compliance with building fire and sign quotes and the acquisition of a business license. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to move it to electronics. Is there anybody in electronics for this item? Alex? I am closing this public hearing and asking for the guidance from the city council.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Would this office, because it's going to be an office, right?
Yes.
Would it be subject to like health and fire inspection and?
Yes, ma'am, at the time they require, they will apply for a business license or even to convert it into an office, they're going to be required to comply with health, fire and health codes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
May I like to make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number nine, ordinance fifty one zero zero is, is approved by vote and I'm calling for item number ten. And Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number ten is a conditional use permit renewal for a daycare center in a residential zone. This is at three eleven West Leonaco Apartments AMB. This is the west half of lots one and two, block one oh three Mission Original Townsite. The applicant has, is Jose M. De La Garza, if the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Cummings and Leonaco Street along the south side of Leonaco. The applicant owns a triplex on the property and currently rents out one unit and uses two of the units for the childcare services. They currently have a CUP for home occupation that was approved back in September fourteen twenty twenty for a period of one year. Since the applicant does not reside at the triplex, they are required to get ninety percent of the signatures within, from property owners within two hundred foot radius, which they are in compliance. Days and hours of operation are Monday to Friday from five to nine, Saturday from seven AM to two PM. They, they currently have two employees parking there, currently have six parking place, spaces to be shared within the tenants and the applicant. P and Z and staff recommended approval for a three year, for three years, subject to compliance with a ninety percent support from the mail out radius, comply with DHS certification and must comply with section one point fifty six dash one of the zoning code. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against the conditional use permit renewal? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for the electronics, is there anybody in electronics for this item? We have nobody, so I'm going to close the public hearing for item number ten and I'm going to move for the, for guidance from the council.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
I'll second, I just got a question.
Recognize your second and you, you have the floor, Mr. Pl.
Just a first review.
No, it's, this is the second review.
So more than likely, I mean, you will come back, what, in two years?
Three, three years. But each time it comes back, it needs to get ninety percent of the signatures in order to comply since nobody resides at the, at the site.
Question was answered.
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item number ten, ordinance five one zero one is approved by vote and I'm calling for item number eleven, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number eleven is a preliminary and final plot approval for a replat of Plaza Candera. This is a three point fifty seven acre of land and being all of lots one oh one through one eighteen replat of lot three and four Stewart Plaza subdivision. This is currently zone C three, general business, the developer is Candera Enterprises and the engineer is DG Vanguard in Engineering LLC. Their re-subdivision is located on the southwest corner of US Express thirty three and South Stewart Road. The developer is proposing to replat all of lots one oh one through one eighteen to make one sin, one lot subdivision and maintain its commercial use. Utilities are already in compliance. P and Z and staff recommends approval, subject to complying with all typical format findings and recording of restrictions. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against a preliminary and flat approval? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics, is there anybody in electronics for item number eleven? No, I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for the guidance from the council.
Want to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, item eleven is, is approved by vote and there's no ordinance attached to it, am I correct? It's clear. I'm calling for item number twelve, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item number twelve is a preliminary and final plot approval for the replat of Sherland Plantation Village on Dewa Phase Two subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of lots eight and nine Sherland Plantation Village on Dewa Phase Two. It is currently zone PUD by unit development, the developer is Radcliffe Kilman and the engineer is Seca Engineering. The replat is located on the northeast corner of Glasscock Road and on Dewa Drive. The developer is proposing to relocate the, the common boundary between lots eight and nine and, and its residential use remains the same. They are complying with city water, city sewer. All utilities are in place. The city engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff and P and Z recommended approval, subject to compliance with all typical format findings and recording of restrictions. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against preliminary and final plat approval? If you're in the audience, please approach the podium at this time. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to head to electronics and electronics, there's nobody there. I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for guidance from the council.
Move for approval, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and it's opening final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries five oh and no ordinance is required for this item. But moving to a consent agenda, all consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session on any item, whether or not such item is posted as an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. Consent agenda item number fourteen, consent agenda item number fifteen that has resolution number seventeen forty five. Consent agenda item sixteen, consent agenda item seventeen, consent agenda item eighteen, consent agenda item nineteen. Any of the council would like to pull any of the items, this is the time.
I would like to pull out item number nineteen.
Any other item?
There's no other items, I would like to make a motion to approve the concept of agenda items.
We have, we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, same sign. Motion carries, consent the agenda item thirteen, fourteen, fifteen with resolution number seventeen forty five. Item sixteen, seventeen and eighteen are approved and I'm calling for item number nineteen. Mr. Purchasing Agent, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, presenting item nineteen is requesting authorization to solicit proposals for the construction of the City Mission Public Safety Facility, which will include a police and fire station, number six, located at Military Parkway and Brave Fogel Road. The Warren Group has completed the plans for this solicitation, reimbursement through TERS has been approved. Staff is seeking council authorization to solicit proposals.
Now, I would just wonder, I have not seen this plan, so I don't know the rest of the council. I know we had approved this item, but can we have a listen idea, how's it going to look like or?
I do, I can, I have a black.
I mean, I know there's a picture, but how big is the facility or? It's, it's everybody, I mean, I guess by now, I guess the fire and chief department already met with the engineer and.
Chief Dominguez and chief Saches both approached the podium, please, and, and answer, Mr. Platas, have you met with the architects and are you okay with what, what they're recommending?
Well, the only thing I want to say, this is a five million dollar project, I think a little bit of say so from the council could should mean a little bit to you, I don't know, I, I, I'm not seeing the plan, so I mean, I think it's. We had met for all the projects, the part, we have participated and everything and this one is the, I mean, I can, I'm glad that we're ready to go out for bids, but I mean, I would like to have an idea at least how it's going to look like and, I mean, just my only.
Yeah, in the past with other projects, we've been able as a council to have a workshop to discuss the colors with the architect of different things of the flooring of to be consistent with other city buildings, I guess. I, I haven't seen anything either, I'm like Mr. Pl.
I mean, I don't mind going up the bids, but I just feel like.
Let me start, start with the highest ranking officer, Mr. Perez, you have the floor, sir. And then we'll go by individual department.
Yes, sir, this is, this project has been ongoing for over a year, if not longer. One of the, we, we did a groundbreaking earlier this year for this project. We, we did, I, I have both chiefs here that have been working with the architects for some time now. One of the, obviously, the, what, what has taken long with this project is the past construction. It was originally over budget. This is a TERS funding, funded project. Originally, the original estimate, and this is, it's probably a couple of years, actually, then you recall how many, three years, at least three years? And so this, this project started over three years. And so originally, the TERS had allocated three point eight million for this project. It was, it was designed and it was way over budget. I, I did present to the TERS for the additional request of an additional one point two million. And the, the TERS did approve a five million dollar budget for this project. It, it's, since it's been, been reduced as far as the size on the fire station side. It was originally with three bays for the fire trucks. It, it, it has been reduced to two bays currently. It is very similar to the building that is on Glasscock and Military, the substation over there. However, we did make some modifications, obviously improvement and for growth for this building. It, it will be a, a, a major improvement for the area. The, the property was donated by the roads development for this, for this substation. That was the, the, the plan, you know, prior, prior to the, to the administration, my administration. When this project started, we were just modifying the plans as we went along. And, and the chiefs can go into detail as far as each, each of the portions on the PD side and on the fire side. So they can explain the, the overall layout of this project.
Thank you. From the police side, Mr. Plata, obviously, like the city manager said, we basically followed kind of the full plan we have at the south station here on Glasscock Road from the police standpoint. Obviously, I made some modifications of things that we didn't need one, it was a Sally Port, I did away with the Sally Port. I did away with some modifications and kind of made the concept where we have here in our criminal investigation bureau kind of an open concept in the different office settings to be able to accommodate more people that way. But we were told to reduce the size of the building based on, obviously, that we were over budget. But we were told to reduce the size of the building based on, obviously, that we were over budget. We're giving, obviously, five million for the construction plus anything that goes inside the building from security systems to furniture, computers, and that's what we're sticking to, the five million that we've been allocated. And obviously, we've worked with the Warren Group to bring those, those costs down. And obviously, from my standpoint, obviously, we, with the design the way it is, as far as the police side, based on the need and the need currently on that side, I think that we're within the parameters and will stay within the parameters of the five million dollars that were allocated.
Chief Sancho.
Councilor and Mayor, in regards to the fire section of the facility, basically, as the city manager mentioned, initially, it was a three bay concept for fire apparatus and equipment has been reduced down to two bays. One of the main changes in regards to that from our current station, we're five, is the length of the bay. It, the proposed one was seventy-five feet. We, we increased it to a hundred feet across to accommodate at least four apparatuses. If we do do an elevated platform or aerial device, we can fit up to three apparatuses if so. In regards to the living facilities, obviously, my personnel is, is manned twenty-four hours. It has three quarters up to, I believe, nine sleeping quarters to include a lieutenant and a future, a potential sector captain. So it's really outfit that way. It does have a fitness area for the firefighters. As like I mentioned, a living area or day room with kitchen in regards to that. As stated before, we met with the architect group numerous times and with different redensions in regards to it and changes to minimize the cost in this project. Other than that, the architect does have a rendering of covers and tiles and stuff that can be shown to you. That's all I have at this point in regards to this project.
Thank you, Chief.
I just, Randy, for the record, I would like for something like this, especially, I didn't know we were reducing the size, okay? I guess in something like this, there's no doubt in my mind that it's going to beautify the area that is gonna serve with the citizens. I just feel like it was important for us to know. We're reducing the size. I understand the cost of construction, we're not, but I think as a council, we need to be informed of those things because we got citizens always asking us questions. I mean, at least, I mean, speaking for myself, so something like this, I mean. I don't know how much of a reduction on the building that we having. I mean, maybe there's something that if it's something that it was needed, is the responsibility to the council. There's more money needed to make budget amendments or something, but I just very surprised, I mean, that we had this item and I don't know, what was the proposed building? How big was the first one?
The, the majority of the difference was on the, on the bay for the fire truck apparatus. They reduced it substantially. And then also on the interior of the building, there were some minor modifications that were done that were excluded. But overall, the majority of that was, was the cost was that is, is the additional bay for the fire truck.
And another two, sometimes you learn from other, for experience, you know, but we had water leaks on some other building. We had problems with roofs and stuff like that, so when we want to prove something like that, we can address all those things so we can have that peace of mind saying that now that, I'm not questioning the architect, but I would like to say, you know what? Based on the experience that we have with another building, we are addressing these things. I mean, I just, it's just not this particular building. I would like for us, Randy, in the future, especially the rest of the other council, I don't know how they feel, but to me, maybe you can call a special meeting and I'd be glad to attend and before we finalize something.
Yes, I can definitely do that, sir, and share the renditions that have been proposed to, to us. So we, I mean, there, there is still time for that, especially the cosmetic changes, but we can definitely do that.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. I know that for the, the last station, fire station, we, you know, went back and forth on what kind of roof we're gonna have. So I'd like to have those types of details as well. I just wanna make a comment with a facade. I, you know, I love to travel and everywhere I go, I see new buildings coming up, but they still keep the historic of the town within the style of their facilities. And if I had a choice, I would want that facade of what Mission's all about in our historic buildings to take part here. Maybe visiting other towns that are building new fire and police departments that are joined like that so that it could be a little different than what we already have.
Any other question? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Are we gonna have a special meeting on the item? I think that's what the request was. Right, Ruben?
Yeah, I don't mind having that.
But we need to begin the solicitation of the construction.
But what are the plans change? I would like to take the item.
Scope of work for adjustment.
A second, the motion.
There's a motion to table, Mayor.
Jessica, move to table.
Yeah, we have motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving to approval and authorization, item number twenty. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, item number twenty is a homestead exemption variance for a point eighty-six acre tract of land at lot twenty-eight-nine West Addition to Sherland. It's currently zoned agricultural and the applicant is Ephraim Lee Martin. The subject site is located along the south side of East Mall Two, between Mayberry and Bryan. On November tenth, twenty fourteen, the city council passed the homestead exemption variance ordinance, which allow for homesteads to be granted various waivers to the city subdivision requirements if and only if the lot is being proposed for the applicant's personal single-family residential home. The single-family residence must be complied with, with, completed within one year. They will be complying with city water and sewer. The P N Z and staff recommended approval subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variances requirements. This item is now being approved.
I want to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Open it for any final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number twenty-one. Mr. Luna, you have the floor.
Item twenty-one is a preliminary plat approval for Buenas Suerte One subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of a fourteen point seven twenty-six acre tract being all of Lot Eighteen, Block Nine, Texan Garden subdivisions. This is in our E T J. The developer is C L Three Properties LLC and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. The proposed subdivision is located at the southwest corner of Abram and Mile Six. They are proposing twenty-one single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Aguasud. Sewer will be addressed via septic tank. They are proposing two hydrants that will serve as filling stations. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. Staff is recommending approval subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with street alignment policy and meeting any comments from the county planning department office. This item is now before you.
I want to approve.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second in this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-one is approved five zero, and item number twenty-two. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item twenty-two is a preliminary plat approval for Tanglewood at Benson Palm Place for being a re-subdivision of thirteen point three twenty-six acres located in the south end of Porcion Forty-eight, Forty-nine, Fifty, Fifty-One, and Fifty-Two at lot fourteen Del Monte Irrigation and Construction Company. It's currently zoned P U D by unit development. The developer is Mike Rhodes and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. The subdivision is located approximately four hundred and fifty feet north of Schubach Road and Military Parkway, east of Tanglewood Facye with a continuation on Oriole Drive. They are proposing sixty single-family residential lots. They are complying with city water and sewer. P N Z and staff recommended approval subject to payment of capital sewer recoveries, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all of their format findings. This item is now before you.
Want to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a second in this opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-two is approved four zero, and calling for item number twenty-three. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-three, Mayor, is a preliminary plat approval for Lantana subdivision. The engineer requested that we withdraw their request. He submitted a letter this afternoon. So he requests that no action be taken on this item.
Yeah, no action is gonna be taken on item number twenty-three, so we're moving over to item number twenty-four in this. Ms. Luna, you have the floor.
Item number twenty-four is a final plat approval for Weston Oak subdivision. This is a thirty acre tract of land being all of lots fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-six, Block Nine, Texan Garden subdivision. This is in our E T J. The developer is Everardo and Rigoberto Villarreal, and the engineer is Isaguirre Engineering Group LLC. The proposed subdivision is located on the west side of Abram Road between West Mile Five and West Mile Six Road. They are proposing forty-two single-family residential lots. The water belongs to Aguasud. Sewer will be addressed via septic tanks. They are, they are proposing nine fire hydrants that will serve as filling station. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. P N Z and staff recommended approval subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with street alignment policy and meeting any comments from the county planning department office. This item is now before you.
I want to approve, along with all the.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Item number twenty-four. This is opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-four is approved five zero, and I'm calling for item number twenty-five.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're seeking approval for resolution number seventeen forty-six adopting and approving the Texas term sheet for the repayment of opioid-related expenditures and payment to abate opioid-related harms to the City of Mission. This collaboration is between the state of Texas and political subdivisions such as the City of Mission to effectuate the resolution of the opioid litigation against pharmaceutical supply chain participants. Use of the funds will be in a manner that would promote an effective, meaningful abatement of the opioid pandemic within this county and throughout Texas. The City of Mission will be receiving one hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number seventeen forty-six for the record. I also wanna add that if we do pass this resolution, it also will allow the City of Mission to apply for, for a pool of money that's gonna be developed for up to, from my understanding, seventy million plus. It can be, that's gonna be a pool of money, but so, so, so that's an added to this resolution also for the, for the purpose of putting on the record. Any, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution number seventeen forty-six is approved five zero, and calling for item number twenty-six. And modest, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to authorizeation to purchase janitorial supplies from the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year for the Gulf Coast Paper Company via buy board contract number six four nine dash twenty-one. This is for janitorial supplies will be utilized by the various departments within the city to properly upkeep the maintenance to the facilities. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-six is approved five zero. Calling for item number twenty-seven, Mr. Alveda. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Item twenty-seven, authorization to award bids for chlorine gas for the Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. The City of Mission has accepted an open one bid response. Staff recommendation is to award bid to DPC Industries, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis for six months at a cost of a thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars per ton cylinder. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve. We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and open it for any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Alveda.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Alveda, thank you.
Motion is approved. Five oh. Go ahead.
Mr. Alveda, I noticed, so they were the only bid, right?
Correct.
We usually have done business with them.
Yes, correct. For the past seven years, they've been the same vendor.
Okay, and we've been, no problems with them at all?
No problem with the service.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item number twenty-eight, Mr. Alveda.
Item twenty-eight, authorization to award bids for liquid polymer chemical for the Public Works Department North and South Water Treatment Plants. The City of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses. One bid was deemed incomplete. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Polydine, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term at a cost of point six zero zero cents per pound. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-eight. It is opening for any discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-eight is approved five with zero, and calling for item number twenty-nine. Mr. Alveda, you have the floor.
Item twenty-nine, authorization to award bids for liquid emotion polymer chemical for the Public Works Department wastewater treatment plants. The City of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Polydine, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specification. Recommendation is based on estimated quantities and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term at a cost of twelve dollars point eight one four cents per gallon. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve. I just got a question.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, and now open it for discussion. Mr. Plata, you have the floor, sir.
Are all this request, and they're supposed to be approved prior to October first?
They, they begin at the fiscal year October first. Some of them are, are due maybe, for example, November. So we try to present them before they're due, so I'm not sure if they'll be retroactive to October. That is a question.
Yes, and also, this is all the chemicals that are for the new budget. And so that's, that's where they're presented in October, but it is a yearly contract for this, these chemicals.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number twenty-nine is approved five zero. Calling for item number thirty. Mr. Terraz, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item thirty. Authorization to purchase V S All Source from AquaMetrix Sales Company for digital water meters for the installation of new water service throughout the City of Mission, which consists of residential and commercial water meters. Estimated cost is the hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars with seventy-eight cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Wow, question.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
You have, go ahead, Mr. Terraz, you have the floor before I ask.
I think Randy can.
So, so this, this, Mayor and Council is for new development as you all know that we're moving with the smart meters, and so this is for new development. If you recall, the, the contract is currently for existing meters. And so this is for new subdivisions that will require water meters. And so currently, these are the meters that would be compatible with the system, and so therefore whether you all would like to.
And so therefore uh whether you all uh would like to uh take into consideration this item or uh table it for the next meeting.
But if uh, if we table it, then you're not going to have meters. So, so construction would be stopping on your, your subjects, am I correct?
Well, the uh currently what, what uh, if, and if that's the case, we would uh use the, the, the current meters that are being purchased uh for the replacement, if that's the case, and not necessarily stop uh development.
What is the cost per meter?
It varies, Mr. Plata, on the attachment, uh there is a, a breakdown of the items. And for example, at three-quarter inch, it's approximately a hundred and thirty-three dollars. And for a one inch, which is the most common, that the, the three-quarter and an inch, uh two hundred and seven dollars with forty-six cents.
Mayor, I, I have a legal question. I'd like to take it into executive session when we discuss the other items that we have.
Okay. Any other questions? So I'm gonna hold this uh item for after we discuss it with a legal, this deserves a legal question. And we'll come back afterwards and, and, and come back. But now we'll call item number thirty-one, since you're the same person.
Thank you, mayor and council. Item thirty-one, authorization to enter into interlocal agreement with the, between the city of Mission, Idauq County, Idauq County Drainage District number one. The entities decide to undertake a certain drainage improvement to the Tierra Dorada drain along portions Shubak Road and Morphil Road. The improvements will assist in addressing flood control measures for the benefit of the residents of the Mission, Idauq County, and those services by the district. The city wishes to participate in the improvements by monetarily contrib- contributing one-third of the cost, which amounts to a hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars with sixty cents. Idauq County Drainage District will participate in the improvements by providing engineering services, plans and design, construction management services, overseeing procurement of a construction contractor monetarily with its financial contribution of equal one-third of the cost of the improvements. Idauq County through prison three will participate in the improvements by a combination of monetary contribution or in-caying services to the equal one-third of the cost of improvements. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign. Motion carries, item number thirty-one is approved five-zero, Mr. Terraz, and you have item number thirty-two, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. Item one, uh, item one, uh thirty-two approval resolution seventeen forty-seven. Adopting Standards Manual, Section Six, Drainage Policy of the City of Mission, recognizing the importance of drainage facilities and policies. In an effort to standardize drainage requirements in the county, the city of McAllen, Far, Edinburgh, and Mission have recommended the adoption of requirements as standardized drainage requirements in the four cities. Adopting Standards Manual, Section Six, Drainage Policy for the City of Mission for the purpose of governing and planning, design, construction, and operations of storm drainage facilities within the city and its extra- extraterritorial jurisdiction and may be reasonably amended by the city engineer in its reasonable discretion. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
There are a motion to approve.
I'm more to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and this is open for discussion.
Uh, yes, could, I can, I'm good. Could you um identify the differences between what we have in place and what the changes will be?
Um, really, really, the main topic, it's the fifty-year detention with a ten-year release. We have been implemented that since twenty-eighteen, when we received those big storm events. So we adopted the drainage district standards uh requested by Mr. Raul Saseen. Since all of our drainage, most of the drainage ditches and all farms, uh they are falling to uh their ditches. Uh, we adopted those standards, so now we're making it part of ours. So that, that would be the only uh major change that we're also adopting with these four cities.
So you're just kind of making it official?
Yes, we're gonna make it, make it official and as you can see, the attachments.
But we have the whole of the policy on it, so now we're just approving the policy to, to, so.
That is correct.
Umbrella of, of what the engineers are doing and requirement.
And uh development uh sets, about say, a drainage uh facility or ditch, are they going to be able to connect?
Yes, ma'am, our, our standards allows for developers to use uh our drainage or any uh drainage along their development to have linear detention, which is stored uh capacity in the ditch.
Yes, but they had their costs.
Yes.
Correct.
Just for the, for the record.
Usually when it's uh, when they want to use any of our ditches, uh we're requiring a hundred-year uh detention.
And you really ask them to expand the drainage.
So they would expand that drainage to a hundred-year capacity.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those post same sign. Motion carries, resolution seventeen forty-seven is approved and calling for item number thirty-three, Mr. Terraz.
Thank you, mayor and council. Item thirty-three, authorization to award bid for construction of the animal shelter office and warehouse slash storage. The city of Mission has accepted an open ten bid responses. Staff recommendation is to award to bid, uh to award the bid to A-one Insulation, the lowest responsible bidder meeting all terms and specifications at the cost of two hundred, two hundred and one dollars with five hun- with five hundred dollars. Uh, staff and city manager recommends approval.
Mayor. Mayor, I have a question.
If I may.
Oh, hold on, let's, let's get the city council. Mr. Terraz, you have a question, go ahead. And then I'll.
So I noticed that a lot of the, I know that A-one does a lot of business with the CDBG homes and stuff like that, right? So you had ten bids, I don't know how we opened it up. Uh, and they got the lowest bid, but have we ever had any issues with them? Are they here so that I could ask them a question? Do we have representation from A-one?
I don't know, either present, uh, like you said, they have done a lot of CDBG, CDBG homes. Uh, that's one of the departments that I don't oversee, I don't oversee their construction.
And then my concern also, Mr. Terraz says this, just like the building prior to this. Uh, we haven't been shown plans of how it looks, if it's going to meet the demands of that. I do know that in the future, we'd like to see an animal shelter because that department is growing. Uh, and um, so.
So uh, with the improvements, what consistent on, on this, the office is the, is very basic. It's just going to be two offices with a meeting room. And uh also there, as part of the plans, is a storage uh little warehouse where they're going to be storing all this equipment, materials, chemicals. And also on the same token, the, with our own forces, we're building several cages. Uh, there are the animal shelter. We're doing those with our own forces, uh which will probably finalize within the next two, two weeks.
So is it going to be made from block or brick or how?
It's a combination of, of both. It's going to be uh, uh wood and uh, and metal. The, the office is going to be wood and metal. And the warehouse is just going to be metal, aluminum metal.
And we don't have.
Thirty by, thirty by forty, the storage, the warehouse. And the office is going to be fifty by thirty.
I remember there was a time that we had a crew that was able to do a bunch of special projects within the city. Is this something that maybe they can do or?
That, that crew, I think it's assigned to uh, to the Park and Recreation.
Monday?
That crew that you're talking about was, is assigned to the Park and Recreation.
I know, but we do have a lot of uh highly skilled employees within the city of Mission. And I'm just wondering.
Right now, our facility.
Because of the amount of the project.
Our facility department, it's composed of uh, we only have five people in, in staff. I have uh two vacancies, which is the master electrician and a journeyman electrician that I haven't been able to fill out in the last year. Uh, as you can see, uh, just at the entrance of city hall, we have been doing that in-house because we got several uh quotes and it was over forty thousand dollars. So Mr.
And I'm glad that you mentioned that.
Took the lead on that and uh.
I'm glad that you mentioned that because that's yet another project that has not been brought to our attention to see what we're going to do to beautify the front of our building. Because I myself think that we need more, more parking, but anyways, that's on another subject. But what I'm saying is that this A-one um company is already doing a lot of CDBG homes and they're going to be taking part on this project because they were the lowest bid. Are they going to have enough time to do all of those projects? And to come, complete them in a timely manner?
Yes, ma'am, and, and on their bid, they put it a, a ninety-day project. So they, I still need to meet uh with them to go over the, the details. But uh, I'm speaking with them, they, they're very confident that they can finish, finalize a project within ninety days, whether permitted, of course, and uh they, they're on board, yes. And.
How much, Randy?
Hold on, there's, there's Mr. Pedes uh, uh, put in one call, so, and then I'll.
No, go ahead, sir. I, I just wanted to make a comment that uh, you know, we can definitely uh put this, this, also this project on the special meeting to discuss it uh as a, as a council uh to, to determine the direction uh moving forward with this project. It's uh, the, the health department uh currently has a, an office that, that is uh in, in much need. And so we, we wanted to move forward uh with this project as a, as an improvement. However, we can definitely uh present uh the plans and, and specs for, to the, to the council. So we can uh, at the same time that we present the Station Six.
Also, the plans and specs were, were done in-house, we did it with our own forces too, to, to save on some of the costs and some of the, the monies and that.
And, and also, ma'am, just to answer your question, the um, we, staff is, is working on beautifying the front of city hall, however, on the additional parking, the um, the area that we were going to expand over by utility, there's uh the garden, uh the garden uh back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, apparently there was uh, the garden was the Chamber Commerce was, is in honor of Lucille de la Garza, wife of former US Congressman Kika de la Garza, uh the expansion of Spear Memorial. So that, that area that, it's, that rededicated to Lucy's uh garden during the two thousand and three Texas Butterfly Festival. And so we're looking at what specific areas, uh because that's the majority of the green area with the butterfly gardens that was dedicated um in two thousand, May and two thousand and three. So we're, we're looking at expanding parking, but uh because of that designation, we're looking at, at areas that, that we can expand.
And as per Mr. Randy's direction, I have worked on a layout for Mr. Pedes. He had asked me to, to look in some areas of how we can improve parking and for employees and for, for our customers, right? So like Mr. Pedes mentioned, I looked at that area and we have a little layout that we can show you of how we can improve the area and still keep that garden uh untouched.
There may be project number three on the, on the mid.
Okay.
For you all to show, show something.
Well, I just think at the time that mayor, with all due respect, I think that at the time that this facility was built over two thousand two, two thousand and two, um, we can beautify the outside and not necessarily make a new building, but make a, a wonderful um for people to see in the front. Uh, right now, as you can, I, I see all the tape, but even when I came in about three weeks ago, I saw that all of the cantera was like chipping away and all of that stuff. It's wear and tear, that's what cantera does when it's exposed. Um, so I would like to see that we also discuss what's the future of the front of city hall.
Okay.
Mr. Plata, you have the floor.
How much land do we have there at the animal shelter?
Well, we've, we have several acres, including our wastewater treatment plant.
Because of that, I don't know, we can do something like a master plan. Now, since you have people that is helping you with the plans. I mean, and maybe we cannot do it all this year, but when you have a master plan, you can take it in sections or by um, to what we can end up with a beautiful um area. I know, is this the one on East Conway, West Conway?
On South Conway and Alvino Valley.
Yes, it's why our.
You see, I mean, I don't think it's, seems very accessible to the public. I mean, it's like way in there um to the, to the south. So I mean, I just want something that is inviting to the citizens, that it is. I mean, if people wants to go and where would people go and adopt um an animal right, right there?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So you see, I mean, you make it kind of like very nice and attractive to many face. I mean, you had two, three, five acres. I mean, it, it makes a big difference to where I think we as a council can approve something that it might take a couple of years, but at least have a master plan. I mean, I think it's very smart and intelligent that before we continue, you know, we gotta sit down and plan before we put any money just to, I mean, you don't have a master plan. It's just, I, I feel like our, our money not being just wisely.
Also, Mr. Plata, this is one of the areas where we're going to be building our shooting range. Uh, we have, have approximately fifty acres. And also the, the dirt that is going to be excavated from the mission lateral, which is approximately, we're requesting a hundred, a hundred thousand cubic yards. So we can start building those the berms for, for that shooting range and also for a training facility for the fire department. That's the same area where they're going to be located at.
And that's one of the reasons why I recommend that they relocate it somewhere else, the animal shelter. That's why we're, we're looking at minimum expenditure right now until we develop that master project.
I know it's a minimal expenditure, but it's still at two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's.
But uh, if you, if you've been to the shelter, you'll know that those are, you know, are, are very, are very much needed for us to, to exist.
I just, I would just feel more comfortable, mayor, if you give me a master plan, something that I feel like um, I mean, yeah, once again, I mean, it's not gonna, we don't have to do it this year, but I just want to make sure that way, when we work on our budget, when we tell the public what going to be the end-up product in that area, at least we are, we can give an educated answer.
Mayor, I would like uh for Mr. Terrazas and Randy to uh, to have a, a meeting workshop and take us out there um so that we can see it, because I have been there. So I, I'm okay with you all adding to the facility because I know it's needed for our employees. But at the same time, when our general public go to adopt an animal, they go and they see all of our um, where we throw our trash and our debris and all that. And so it's not very inviting and welcoming. Uh, so I too, like Mr. Plata, would like to see what we're, a definite plan of what we're going to do moving forward.
But the two hundred and one thousand dollars is just for the warehouse and the office?
Yes, for the office.
Not parking space, right?
No parking space. We added some parking space, uh, I want to say, last year, we did it in-house also. We, we paved the entrance all the way to the animal shelter. And we added a couple of parking spaces, including handicap to, to that area.
And we can do that, uh, that can be recommended also.
Did you mention that, that you were going to add on um some shelters to the?
Some cages, some uh dog cages, yes.
Some panels?
Yes.
Okay, so there is room for, to expand the, the building.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of land out there for, for the project, but the thing is, is that the, the proper area for an animal shelter is what, that, why I want all of us to go and see it firsthand, so that we could see, okay, we're growing. I mean, we have the contract with, I think, the city of Alton, the city of Palmview. Whenever they have stray dogs, they come to us and then the adoption. So we get uh, we get a lot of people that probably go in there on top of our city workers. You want to wait on, uh, on working the bid until we go to the shelter? Yes, that would be nice.
So you want to table the items, the, okay?
Yeah, I make the.
Just keep in mind that due to uh material availability, uh, the contractor can only hold the prices for certain amount of days. So just keep that in mind.
How many days is that taken?
I'm not too sure how many days they put in their bid, but uh
Normally it's thirty days.
It can change, it, it varies, ma'am. They don't have to hold to
Yeah.
to the days that they submit, so that, that can vary.
Here comes the purchasing day.
Just to clarify, in the solicitation, it says that we can hold the bid before taking any action up to sixty days.
Sixty days. Magic number, sixty days.
And you say they would do it in six months or how long?
In ninety, ninety days.
Ninety days.
This is set up for ninety days.
With how many rainy days?
It depends to. This is a calendar day, so it's three months.
Ninety days with zero rainy days.
But of course.
We can go take a tour this week and make it as a special meeting if you'd like. I mean, I don't have no problem. I think that this project is a very important one. Um, and we need to really give it our hundred percent. Okay, if we have a sixty-day uh window, if we just wait.
So you gonna table that, Miss?
Yes, I make a motion to table.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-three is tabled. Calling for item number thirty-four, Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-four is to award the depository bank contract. Proposals were received on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one for depository bank services. The city received four proposals. Contract term will be for the period of December first, twenty twenty-one through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, which is four years. All four proposals were deemed to be acceptable. A committee evaluated the four proposals for acceptability, and the proposals were rated based on evaluation criteria in four categories: qualification of key personnel, experience, service approach, and cost of services. The results of the committee evaluation ranking is as follows: Texas National Bank, Texas Regional Bank, Lone Star National Bank, and Plains Capital.
I'm going to approve the committee evaluation ranking recommendation.
Of what bank?
Our Texas National Bank.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-four is approved five-zero, and calling for item number thirty-five. Ms. Bella, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-five is approval of the September twenty twenty-one tax collection report. The total twenty twenty tax levy was twenty-four million, two hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, and the amount of collections as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is twenty-three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, which represents ninety-seven point twenty-four percent of the twenty twenty tax levy. Total delinquent tax levy is two million, four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty, I'm sorry, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents, and the amount of collections as of September thirtieth is six hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, which represents twenty-seven point zero six percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item number number thirty-five. Do I hear any comments from any of the council members, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-five is approved five-zero, so.
Thank you.
So I'm asking for item number thirty-six. Chief Sanchez, you have the floor.
Mayor and council, item number thirty-six, authorization to enter into interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and the City of Palmview regarding backup emergency medical services. For the purpose of that Palmview EMS to serve as a backup emergency medical service provider to the City of Mission, the requesting city shall not be required to reimburse the responding city for the cost of providing the services set forth in this agreement for mutual aid services. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and it's open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-six is approved five-zero, and calling for item number thirty-seven. Chief Sanchez, you have the floor.
Item number thirty-seven, staff is seeking authorization to purchase medical supplies and training props from boundary, boundary utilizing ARPA funds. The medical supplies will be utilized for the Mission Fire Department Emergency Medical Service Division, and the training, medical props, and equipment will be utilized to enhance EMT personnel skills. The purchase cost is in the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents via buyboard contract six one zero dash two zero. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-seven is approved five-zero. Calling for item number thirty-eight. Chief Sanchez, you have the floor.
Item thirty-eight, authorization to award the bid for roof replacement for Station Four Fire Fire Department Substation Number Four. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, City Council approved authorization to solicit for bids for the the roof replacement on Fire, Mission Fire Department Station Number Four. Seven bids were received, and the lowest bid for asphalt shingles at twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Seeking authorization to award base bid to RNG Enterprise Co., LC and GNG Contractors. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion on the board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion.
Yeah, so we decided to do shingles instead of the.
I can.
That was the.
Yes. So we did, we did receive a a bid for the metal, but it was not, it was not complete, it was not a complete bid. The next the next bid amount that would be metal is seventy-two thousand. Chief, is that correct?
Correct.
So twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred would be a a shingles roof, which it currently has now. So the next bid for metal, the the original, I mean, the lowest bid for metal, but it was not complete, was forty-nine thousand. However, it was not a complete bid, so the next metal bid would be seventy-two thousand.
Wasn't this the the roof that had some insurance?
Yes, and it was about approximately about thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-six, just below thirty-seven thousand.
For the the replacement of the the shingles.
Your recommendation is to just go with the asphalt, so so out of pocket with asphalt is is about what?
You.
Six?
No.
Nothing, we're gonna keep eight.
Because it's.
Twenty-seven thousand, seven.
Oh, so you're making money on it.
Well.
What are we gonna do with the extra savings?
It is what it is.
Goes to the general pot.
Yes, it's it's it goes under miscellaneous, and we go ahead and expense out the the expenditure project and the remainder stays in the miscellaneous account.
And there's nothing at this firehouse number four that needs more improvements that that could be helped with?
Yes, we can definitely, there is, we do have a list of of items for that project, for that station that we're already working on.
Okay, so that could be helped to make it nicer.
Can we make that informal motion that the that the?
Yes.
Access or residual for improvements of the.
Kitchen, restroom walls, I mean, I don't know. Furniture.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question?
Do you need to add back to the motion?
Who made the motion? I didn't.
Mr. Plata made the motion.
Mr. Plata, you made the motion for the remaining money.
Yes, you want me to?
Yes, you you first, Mr. Bella, I have to rescind the second.
Okay, rescind.
Rescind the second, and then you rescind the first?
Yes, I rescind the first one.
You have the floor, Mr. Plata.
So you wanna make the motion?
Now I'll accept the motion.
Based on those recommendations. You're gonna.
You want me to make the motion?
Is there a second?
Make them, I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred for the shingles.
Okay.
And the remaining money to go to Station Number Four for any other improvements as needed.
Second.
We have a second, and final discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-eight is approved five oh with the with the motion is set. Item number thirty-nine, Chief Dominguez, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor of City Council. Item thirty-nine is authorization to accept the twenty twenty-two Local Border Security Program Grant from the Office of the Governor Homeland Security Grand Division for FY twenty twenty-two grant here. The total amount of the grant is a hundred ninety thousand dollars. The grant will provide overtime funds to increase patrol presence in and around the US-Mexican border and throughout the City of Mission. The grant is in effect from September first, twenty twenty-one through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this grant.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number thirty-nine is approved five-zero, and we're calling for item number forty. Chief Dominguez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item forty is authorization to submit payment to Tyler Technologies for the Enterprise System Contract. Payment is for the additional software, hardware to include the required contract payment for FY twenty-one, twenty-two for the new enterprise system. Payment will come from the Office of the Governor's Nipers Grant. The total amount of the payment we're requesting to make is a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven fifty-seven, twenty-four. This is the remaining amount that we have from the grant. The grant total at the very beginning was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven fifty-seven, twenty-four. So we have these a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven fifty-seven, twenty-four. We're fully operational on this brand-new system as of October first, and this will be the last payment, so we're requesting this payment to Tyler Technologies for the contract.
Move for approval.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number forty is approved five-zero, chief, so I call it for item number forty-one, and you have the floor, sir.
Item forty-one is authorization to pay the yearly maintenance for Tyler Technologies for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Tyler Technologies has been our software provider for all of Records Management Systems since nineteen ninety-one. This would include servicing all our software modules and upgrades to our current operating system. The total cost is a hundred and fifteen thousand, zero, ten, and twenty-eight cents. This includes our, all our operating costs. Two, three years ago, it was a five ninety-seven thousand, based on the contract we signed, it was at ninety thousand. This is year three of those ninety thousand, so it's ninety-four, five. And then obviously, we have some other devices that we need to pay for as well. That's the a hundred and fifteen thousand, zero, ten, twenty-eight. We're requesting authorization to pay for the maintenance to Tyler Technologies.
Move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number forty-one is approved five-zero, chief, and thank you very much, and we'll call it for item number forty-two. Mr. Perez, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item forty-two is the discussion possible action on modifying COVID-nineteen guidelines. This is the opportunity for the City Council to make modifications of the city's existing guidelines. Currently, the the average of of COVID numbers, based on the county's numbers, have been an average of about five a day in the City of Mission. Of course, that's that they're no no longer providing the number of deaths, if any. And so that that's been the for the past month of October.
So so the report that you're filing with us that says zero death, you're not sure that that county doesn't cannot confirm that we do have deaths in the city of Mission?
Yeah, and if they do, sir, they 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 encompass all the areas around Mission to include, they go by zip code.
Yeah.
And so it it's not necessarily within the City of Mission limits. It could be our surrounding areas as well, for example.
County coalescingly has been to single digits, am I correct?
And in some, in some days, they have, sir, today's numbers, for example, they 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 did report five deaths. Three in the Mission area, again, it could be within the surrounding areas. One in the far and one in some one. So those are the numbers that they're they're basically providing us, and so currently, we we are working on the COVID incentive program. I did want to introduce the acronym that we're looking at, and I'll send it to everyone so everyone can see it as a an acronym for the card as THRIVE, T-H-R-I-V-E. And of course, it's for consideration, and and so what that represents is together helping recover an an independent and valued economy. And that's what THRIVE represents, of course. I'll I'll send over the rendition of the logo that we've we put together for you all to to look at, and of course, that's staff has been working on 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 that, and so we we wanna roll out the program as soon as possible. And so I'll send that over to for you all, so you all can see the actual design that we've created for that acronym.
Randy, can you say it again?
Thrive. It's together helping recover an independent and valued economy. And that's all I have, sir, for this.
I have a motion to approve Randy's presentation.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number forty-two is approved five-zero, and I'm calling for unfinished business, which is none. So I'll move into routine matter as soon as the president sits down, he has the floor.
I just wanted to invite everyone to Friday's. We do have a trunk or treat scheduled for Friday at the Mission Event Center. It's it will be from six to nine, from the seven to ten, I'm sorry, and so what 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 it will be, we will have around the around the Mission Event Center, we we will have trunk or treats set up for, it is a free event, open to the public. We are, if anyone would like to bring their we do have areas for roller skates, roller blades, skateboards for families, of course, their bikes are welcome and so forth, there shouldn't be any traffic in that area, so it's safe for the kids. So that is scheduled for Friday, October twenty-nine, seven to ten, at of course, kids are encouraged to bring in their costumes. Also, I do want to introduce our our new IT director, Mr. Abram Ramirez, is starting today. He.
Ramirez, please step up to the podium so the the citizens can see who you are, sir.
He he currently has a a bachelor's and a master's degree in information systems. It has a school experience and also is was the IT administrator for the Idaho County Sheriff's Office, and will be joining us, this is his first day today.
Wow.
Has he already, he already been informed that he has a bid in the market?
Yes.
First day.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're well known, you're well known for your expertise. FYI. Yes.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, as a mayor, I want to comment that I want to thank anybody and everyone that actually had to do something with the groundbreaking, Brett Benson and his staff and everybody else that had on on the Lions Park. I think that was an excellent, excellent presentation, you know, I think there was well attended, you know, and 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 I know that there were some great speeches about
Six months.
About the the red carpet and all the all the the problems that we have sometimes with with applications and grants and so forth.
Red tape.
The red tape, you know, and so forth, and and we were experiencing it already. So we're working, we're working on the red tape, but without red tape, you know, we wouldn't know how to step forward with with getting those fundings that are that are that are required, but I want to give you a round of applause to anybody and everybody. The other thing is, I heard that there was a pageant and that somebody got selected, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna forward it to Ms. Ortega, so she can give us a detail, something about the some princesses or some coronations. So give us those details that that happened.
No?
Yes.
So not just myself, but our city manager's daughter also surprised us, Angela Perez and Lauren Ochoa. A couple of weeks ago told us of their interest on being on the Texas Fiesta. Kind of late notice, I was more shocked, I think Randy was shocked too, but the girls did really well, there was four that participated this Saturday, and so they're gonna be representing the text, the Lion Sunset Organization. My daughter received the Duchess of Honeydew, and Mr. Perez's daughter Angela received the Duchess of Grapefruit, so we're really excited. So we're really excited, I hope you all will support us. I think that just now, it teaches them interviewing skills, how not to be shy, to walk in heels, which my daughter has never done. So it's very exciting to be part of our legacy, right, our tradition here in the city of Mission and the Tex Citrus Fiesta. So we're very honored, Mayor.
Yes, and congratulations to both parties. Make sure your daughters are, receive the, congratulations from the office of the mayor and, and honor it and keep, keep the citrus Fiesta moving forward. Also, I want to mention that the Greater Chamber also had an excellent gala, you know, that was very, very, very wonderful, very exciting, and it was very relaxing also. The atmosphere was very well tuned in with, with the theme. You know, I think we, at least I had a, a good time there, you know, as far as that is concerned. And so, and I, I want to thank the Chamber's Board for, for increasing the Chamber membership from last year to this year. And of course, the ones that got the awards there, you know, I was very, well, George Rice was one of them, and then I was very impressed with Mr. Kano and Kano Trucking. He started with one eighteen-wheeler, and now he has over eight hundred trucks rolling every day. You know, so, so that, that shows the spirit of, of, and, and I kind of thank him because he had an option to, to be part of, to be a part of the membership in McAllen, and he chose to be a member of Mission. So that, that speaks a lot about our Chamber and, and how people want to come to Mission. And I just want to, as a mayor, I just want to make sure that, that those things are highlighted. In the event that there's press here, that, you know, that want to highlight something positive about the city of Mission, and that is that people are coming into the city of Mission over other cities in the, in the valley. And that, and that is something that we, we as a council, as well as the mayor, together have worked and strived, and, and we strive it on a daily basis, just as the message to send across. Without further ado, the mayor pro tem, the city council comments.
My comments, Mayor, were just that. I went to the Moroccan themes Chamber event, and they never cease to amaze me. Their events are just, I'm speechless, and I just want to commend CJ Sanchez because I know that he's very instrumental in designing. I mean, you went in there and it was like if you were in Morocco. I mean, it was amazing. And to congratulate all the local businesses that are here in the city of Mission, Five by Five and Mission Hospital, just give them a big round of applause, right, for everything that they do for our city.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Perez.
Yeah, the same thing here, it was a nice event, and I want to congratulate Kano, Broto, Strucky, the hospital, and Five by Five. And they are, you can see that they are big supporters of our business community.
I, I don't have any comments, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rella?
No comments.
Comments, then I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to B T C A government code section five-five-one, one-zero-zero-one. Do I hear a motion? We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries the executive session. We are with a five oh.
In the session pursuant to big BTCA government code section five five one one zero zero one, do I have a motion?
Yes.
We have second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries four zero.
He went to the bathroom.
Oh, he's talking to, and there's Randy. He was talking to the attorney.
Another Randy's here, we can entertain a motion to table item number thirty.
So move.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Calling for item. Item number forty-three A, Mr. Bartines, you have the floor.
Take him here on that one. It's pending litigation. It requires no action, but there were some directives that were issued from the council to the attorney.
A motion to approve the directives.
I make a motion.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four point four plus four zero. And the next one is entertain a motion to adjourn.